Lord.
Your Lord, the government is about it. The government is giving the government state, the government's attention. Here's the wisdom to do us right for all people. The government, all the people here is right. And these things are great. Amen.
Thank you.
I join in the pledge. I believe in this, we believe in fire. I believe in space, so we're there.
And through the public, which stands one nation under God. And that is the whole, the best thing in the world for all.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson? Here. Mr. Gray?
Press.
Mr. Bow.
I'm here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Longhead? Ms. Perry?
Here.
My question is, how important?
A vote of the minutes taken from our regular meeting held on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. I give a motion.
Vote.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Fowler, for the comments. Public comment should be, if there is any discrepancies, in the written minutes only.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Chief, how you doing? I mean, what just? Yeah, I had a little discrepancy because, oh, by the way, my name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White, Jr. I live thirty-six, thirty-eight, Tenth Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, seven-one-three-oh-two. My phone number is area code three-one-eight-four-four-six-six-nine-three-four. Last two weeks ago, apparently my mic was cut off and people been telling me that. So that's a discrepancy right there. There was a lady that stood up and according to the number sits on rules with the city council. They're supposed to sign up, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, she never did sign up and y'all never did call her. And she just stood up when she asked for the public. So that's another discrepancy. Now, I've been in my area for about fifty years and the flooding situation is because... No, no, you talking about the discrepancy, I'm gonna give you the discrepancy.
It's in the written minutes.
Well, there is a discrepancy because if it's been mislaid about what the flooding situation is over there, don't you have to straighten it out?
Mister White, it's in the written?
Yeah, I'm telling you that the written minutes are wrong.
What, what, what makes them wrong?
Okay. When my parents bought over there in that district, you can see the railroad is high. It's been up there for a hundred years like that. So apparently they knew that that was a flood area. Now, you see the new fire department, it's up as high as it's supposed to be.
Mister Benitez, this is not?
Yeah, that's a part of it.
No, sir, it's not.
Yes, it is because...
I'm not gonna argue.
I know you're not.
You know we're not, we're not gonna do that.
But see, you beat me down by just not letting me say what I'm gonna say.
Excuse me, Mister White, how did I beat you down? No.
I said, somebody cut my mic off last week.
Mister, you're losing your time?
Well, that's fine, but all I'm trying to get straight is, when we moved over there, they knew that was a flood plain.
They...
They should have lifted the houses up as high, there's a new house that's over there.
Mister White, we're not gonna do this.
Well, why?
We're not.
Well, you silenced in the public, that's what you tell me.
No, I...
I can't, in other words, I can't tell the truth about what is mislaid about the...
I'm not saying if you can't tell the truth, and I'm not saying that the minutes are mislaid, but we're not gonna go back and forth. This is not what we're talking about.
Yeah, that was part of it. Two weeks ago was a flood?
It's not, no.
In what?
It's not what we're talking about today, Mister White.
You know, that's, that's what's wrong. That's why I asked... Can, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
I asked to ask you to have a vote for regular work so that we could speak out freely. I know my time is up, so I'm gonna sit down.
Next, um... Oh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion, period. To hear a report from Marilyn Jones, unforgetting veterans of Seminole, by David.
Y'all want to speak first? Um, these two young ladies in front of you, they still have my time changing here. If I speak for themselves, three of them, they have their sister, they have a younger sister. And they are doing amazing work for these homeless veterans. And I'm so honored that you guys asked me, asked me to get in for five years' bill to be up supporting the board. And I'm gonna feel something. You guys make me so proud to see you guys doing that. That's called service at its best right there.
All right. Hey, I appreciate you being with us here. Good evening, the leaders of Alexandria, your constituents and friends. Um, first of all, I would just like to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come before you to inform you all of our new program and to just give you a general update on what Unforgettable Veterans is doing. We are really J.B. Housing Group, but we're doing business as Unforgettable Veterans. Um, we are a nonprofit organization based here in Alexandria, over on Jackson Street in the Dunbar Plaza. Um, we are a GPD program working with homeless vets. And we're providing homes for veterans in the Alexandria and Conville area. The last time we were here, we were talking about the challenges that we're facing. Uh, one being finding landlords and property managers who would work with the homeless, homeless period. Um, I can tell you now that it has improved a little, but we still have a long way to go. Once they hear that these are homeless people that we're working with, they don't wanna deal with us. Uh, at this time, I think we have two realtors that works with us and a couple of private, um, or property managers. Let's see. The vets that we work with have to go to the VA. And I don't know if you all are aware, the VA has a homeless department. But before they come to us, they go through the VA for an assessment. The VA then, uh, send us a referral. After that, we interview them to determine if they are appropriate to our program. If they are found suitable for the program, we then go out to find houses. The houses or apartments that we find are affordable apartments. We don't look for anything that they can't, uh, continue to maintain once we are out of the picture. The vets that come to us, normally stay anywhere from six to twelve months. Um, some of them have incomes, some do not. But those that do not have an income, we have, um, a gentleman from the VA who comes to visit once a month to talk to them about finding positions. And sometimes they give them jobs, um, at the VA, just little jobs until they find, you know, uh, the main job that they're interested in. Uh, those that don't have income, we, uh, go to the food bank with them to make sure they get food. If they need bus passes, we provide that. Um, if they need a way back and forth to the doctor, we do that. But most of our apartments are on, well, all of our apartments are on bus routes. So that will allow for them to have transportation for those that do not have automobiles. Again, we look for affordable apartments. Um, five years we have been in existence here, um, all of our people have completed the program. And for our housing too, when they come into the program, they are staged. They have everything that you need in a home, with the exception of a television. They can't believe it, most of them, when they walk in there. Some of them even had to break down in tears, just amazed at what they are seeing. So we're very proud of the work that we're doing with our veterans. Um, in order to be placed in our program, they have to have a, they have to be honorably discharged, uh, other than honorable discharge. Uh, I told you before that they can come with income or without income. And while they are in the program, they are required to save thirty percent of their income. Um, that is, we, um, verify this each month during our meetings to make sure that they are actually saving. We like to deal with veterans who are looking for a hand up, not a, not a hand out. So, so far it's working, we're just continuing to, to grow. We now have a new program that Marilyn is gonna tell you all about.
Okay. Our new program is case management. We collaborated with the VA, of course, for, um, this particular program. And what this program does is we work the, uh, hood batch, hood batch at the VA. They interview, they determine whether the, uh, veterans qualify with income. In the event that they do, they refer them directly to the case management program, which I'm on the move with. It means you're on the move, but that's okay, it's grab time. I promise you it is, especially when I'm with them and we are out searching for houses. That's the hood batch part, because once I find housing, we fill out application with that landlord, um, eye contact, it's called SSVP, um, program, SBF program, I'm sorry. That program assists that veteran and pays deposit for your utilities and personal rent. So I have to be on the piece and the clues to make sure that I'm matching that veteran with that, um, that landlord or with that apartment. They actually pay a percentage of their rent with this particular program. But we also work for PHA, which is that Public Housing Authority. They provide vouchers for those clients. So of course, there is a thirty percent. And the majority of the veterans that I work with, they, they, they have an income. Um, and they, that's how they qualify into the, uh, into the program. And what, um, J.B. Housing, Unforgotten Veterans of Seminole does, because that is our business, what they do is six months in this particular program. Once they complete this program, on the fifth month, I'm discussing with the lead person of hood batch at the VA. Because they'll be coming out on the sixth month. And then we want to know and make sure that they are doing exactly what they're supposed to do to maintain, sustain their housing. So what I do is every month, when they first come in the program, for the first three months, I do home visits, making sure that their rent is paid. And the majority of them don't pay very much. But when you work with veterans, sometimes, especially the ones that's not adjusted to having house, it's a reminder, don't forget your, your rent is due. Did you get a chance to go downtown to pay your utilities? In the event that they need any of those things that I mentioned, we have, um, a vehicle that I transport not only to pay utilities if they need to go to the VA on any medical appointments, if they need to go to the bank, if they need anything, any other services, that's what I'm there for. So therefore, transition in place and this program has to go hand in hand. Because some of our veterans that complete the tip program, they may need another little uplift. So what we do, or what we can do, is transfer them over to the case management program. And I can follow them for the next six months, in the event that they need a little more help than the others. Also, with the case management program, if, once I meet with the, the lead person at the, um, VA, when it's almost time, which is that fifth month, for case management veterans to transfer over back to the VA. If I feel and the lead person feel that that person may need a little more time, I can ask for an extension, and I have asked for an extension on more than one person. And that makes a difference to them, and definitely makes a difference for us. Thank you, guys.
I felt, um, to tell you about an important part of the tip program. And that is, we are responsible for paying their rent and their utilities for the six to nine months that they are in the program.
Or for the nine to twelve months that they are in the program.
Yes, we do all of that for them. And once they have completed the program, everything in the house is theirs. The only thing they have to do is defer to landlord, they put the lease in their name. Because when they first come, it's in Unforgotten Vets' name. They put the lease in their name, we leave the deposits there for them. Um, and then they go down to the city of Alexandria, if there are places in Alexandria, and pay the, um, transfer of utilities to their name. So what else can you ask for? You have somebody to pay in your rent and your utilities for that period of time, and you just save your money.
Again, you locate these beds, how many you go about money instead?
They, they are coming from the VA, they send us referrals. Uh, sometime they find out about us, they call us, and we give them the number to the VA. The, um, our gate's on, it's Dana Melder over there, and she does the assessment. And then she send them, if they qualify, she send them, um, you know, to my program or to Marilyn's program.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Thank you.
They come to our Zooms all the time.
It is.
I said, we...
I still want to ask one quick question. Are those referrals to, uh, social worker services or their primary care providers?
You're asking if they are...
The veterans that get referred to the program?
Uh-huh.
Are referrals to, uh, social worker services?
Oh, oh.
Or, yeah, primary care?
Yes.
So, one, thank you ladies.
Scene, a scene back here. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the man to accept street drainage improvements for Adrian Drive of the whole House of Central Louisiana Residential Development subdivision. Number two, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the man to execute the Enticed State Improvement of the Capital Improvement Metropolitan Planning Organization project. Was Sunny Drive, take the avenue to Lee Street.
Second. I mean, the second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Bell. Any eyes of meaning?
H, resolution. Number three, resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Alexandria, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal of a special tax there in, making application to the state bond commission, in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second, please. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Roy, public comments?
Thank you, I'll be great, French for the county's Elbon Council. Uh, you had previous, a previous council meeting, you made an announcement that, that as required by state law, that you're gonna consider an election call at this meeting to submit to the voters the main of their election, uh, the question of renewal of your construction millage tax that you've been levying for a number of decades. Uh, it is time to consider a renewal of that tax, and this would do it. It does not increase the tax rate. Uh, it is not a new tax, but it is purely a renewal. And it is limited, as it has been for many years, to construction projects in the city. So, in other words, that's for drainage projects, um, things like that, they rose? That is correct. It, uh, has a listing in it of, uh, uh, first of all, it's for constructing or acquiring improving capital improvement projects, including, but not limited to, Sugar House Road, Riverfront and Downtown Capital Projects, uh, Chatlet, uh, Overflow Structures Projects, city-owned infrastructure improvements, residential ditch closures, steep street improvements and repairs, parks and recreation improvements.
Public comments?
They will come back to us, correct?
Mr. Malone?
Happy Black History Month to everyone. Um, you guys know me already. Um, so my question to this resolution, the first question that I have is what is the reason for renewing the tax proposition three years prior to its expiration? Why was that?
You can come on, he'll be answering questions. He'll be answering your questions.
No, I can respond. Um, the State Bond Commission recommends that for the expiring a tax, tax, you consider renewal of that tax at least two years in advance of expiration. It expires in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, okay. All right, next question. What is the reason for extending the period of tax propositions from, it started out at five years, it went to ten years, now we're at twenty years. What was the reason for it to be that long, when it originally started out five?
Right. And this will correspond more to the recreational tax that the city has levied now that, uh, has been renewed and is for a term, uh, actually in excess of twenty years. Uh, but this will also permit the city, if it likes to do so, if this council likes to do so, it will be able to accelerate construction projects by borrowing against that. And the city council has done that previously, uh, did it in two thousand eight. Is the issued bonds borrowers interested in accelerating the number of the construction projects in the city?
The issue we probably are having is, and you guys are very well familiar with it, majority of this money does not go back into districts one, two, and three, the border zone. They spent fourteen million dollars, close to fourteen million dollars, on jazz and downs from the last recreation pass that, so my thing is, we need to come up with another way of making sure districts one, two, and three gets this money. Because what we've been told, and we've been looking, and we've been told this over and again, and you guys live in these neighborhoods, you know your drains, you know, and I still have open ditches. Twenty years later, you still have open ditches, you still have drains, you probably, you still have brown water, you still don't have cameras up. And we know this is a construction, I get that. But this empty promises and that, not limited to, keep that in mind whenever they add that on. Keep that in mind, that means something, because you know what? Before, it wasn't in this rule before. It got put in here when John, the first time Mayor Roy came to the mayor. That's when not limited to was added. So keep this in mind, when this kind of... Okay? Keep that in mind, because that wasn't originally part of what that tax said, when you read the original one. That's all I, I just want to keep y'all informed of. The last question I have is, is there a prioritized list of specific capital projects to use this funding with? And we have a list of this right here, Sugar House Road. Y'all live in Sugar House, y'all know Sugar House Road. You know, Ms. Perry, you live there.
I do.
Why isn't it completed in twenty-something years? I'm just saying, thank you for your time.
Can I respond to that question? That would be a question, he's trying to...
Yes, he got a response.
If you posed the question, someone will respond to that.
We don't have anybody that can answer that question for us.
Um, yeah.
You're here to decide if you want the people to get a chance to vote for themselves on whether they want capital projects.
Right.
This is a, this is, this is someone trying to use this meeting to kill the tax before the people decide. So, so...
I guess, um, I'm gonna pay a way.
Those are political statements, so...
It's just, my concern is, we're, we're doing this without having first had input from constituents. And I'm concerned about placing, making this vote, and having that first discussed, this constituents to give some direction or guidance on what they want to do. You know, because this matter fails in twenty-three, correct?
So, Mr. Lawren, this is to allow the people to have that time here, as you're larking, everyone's nodding their head.
I understand that's a question, but I just, your purpose is, is we're in March, and this is election in May. Do you think that's enough time for people to really be, uh, willing to vote?
Mr. Lawren, if this tax has, is, will be twenty years in the running, we're talking about forty total years of capital outlay for a tax. If, if you wanna not allow the people to renew a property tax, based on someone who doesn't live in the city, doesn't pay property tax, that's a good...
The right to vote?
I want people to be able to vote, I want people to be able to get information and decide for themselves if they're for this tax or not. The only way to start that process is by allowing the people to have it on a call. This seems like trying to kill something and deny people the right to vote.
Someone does a try... By no means, I, I don't want you to think that. But I have constituents in the audience, and they're, they're very vocal and they, and they love District One. And I like getting guidance from them on, on how I should vote. And I feel like I'm voting without guidance. It would be nice if we could have, you know, some discussions about this and vet this out, because now, I get this, I'm getting this report, and I know he's doing a great job, he's doing his job, but now I'm calling for him to make a decision to vote on something, and I don't know what...
But you're not voting, you're only voting for...
I understand, but some people may not even want to...
Mr. Schluter, is this, is this process you've experienced today, as you indicate, sort of abnormal for renewal of this type?
Um, we do, uh, with political subdivisions process, they knowledge renewals on a routine basis. Uh, we've had ten-year renewals, fifteen years, twenty-five-year renewals. And they are required to go through the voters for their consideration, whether they wish to renew a tax or not. And we generally suggest political subdivision, you start at least two years in advance. We've done that for decades, and now the State Bond Commission, uh, recommends that also for political subdivision. So, but as far as the timing standpoint, um, the reason why the bond commission is recommending at least two years in advance is, one, the time period of placing a item on the ballot is significantly longer this time. For example, for the October eleventh election, we have to start at the March meeting of a political subdivision. Also, if a tax renewal fails, uh, most public bodies want to place the opportunity to come back in addition with time. So that's what State Bond Commission is recommending this time.
My, my concern, and I understand, uh, my concern is the not limited to. Should I vote, it's been there for you, but that makes it sound should I vote back in the, make the set this. So, uh, I, I understand your concern, the thing... So if not limited to that being that all capital projects, right? We go with all capital projects?
But it has to come back to the City Council for it.
Yes, I'm saying that I'm just appreciating the money, it's all we're doing.
So if you don't have the money, then you can't do the capital projects, correct?
Right, not only, if, if you don't, ultimately, I know what I would say about it. This tax, and what I know it did, what I know the council was able to borrow due to this spark and what districts receive. I'm not here to debate stuff that's just untrue and can factually be shown that. What I would tell you is if, what I would tell the council is, it not only funds general capital projects, which you have to have, or the city will be in a failure situation on drainage, drainage and roads alone. What you want in a call like this, all of these things have to be up. You don't know, as Mr. Perry just said to me, in 20 years' time or even 10, capital projects coming out of money as we've gone over. Grants are matched, they can become unmatched. The reason you place items in a call is because it allows the people to hold you accountable to the signature projects you sell. Before my time, that project was culled. It was for years of that. In this time, with the spark bonds that were part of using this tax to accelerate, as Grant described, those projects included Ruston Fountain, Ruston Fountain was completed to residential level, cleaning up, it came out, it took its place, is what we've talked about with you, listening to the public. What was it? The Chaplain Outfall Structure is a critical project. So this allows you to give a list of those things that later you may decide, in addition to having the tax, we want to borrow against it and accelerate, take money upfront that amortizes out. We were able to, we paid those off early in cases. We were able to do a lot of work by leveraging money. And so that's what this is in place to do.
Are we currently paying any bonds?
But we still currently paying bonds?
Are we still servicing that?
Uh, we are servicing that on a 2008 bond that they have paid off, they have been paid off.
But they were paid off in, go ahead. So do we have any other debts out there?
We have no debt outstanding payable from this particular millage, the capital improvement tax.
What about other millages, and what about other?
That's what I was gonna say, not from this one, but we have a 2008 sales tax.
We have a sales tax bond issue that's outstanding from 2008, and it has two, three years more.
It'll be paid off in two years.
It'll be, it'll be paid off fairly quickly.
Do we also have the utility system, we still service that one? We service that then, is that separate or are they?
On the utility system?
Yes.
Yeah, the utility system has been financed with utility revenue bonds, and there are a number of series of bonds outstanding, publicly sold bonds and others that have been sold through the state. Two of the issues have forgiveness, so principal and interest will never be paid on that, on those two issues.
And where would the, the utility stuff be paid off? I just want to know, but, so here's the deal. This, this is where we discuss this.
Yeah.
Because people have these questions, and we're confined in such a short time span to really set out all these issues and people discuss this.
Except that it hasn't been short, it's been two years that this discussion could have come up last time, and we just forget these questions just now. Now, I've been meeting with some of the council members who routinely go over this and want to make sure, but it, it isn't fair to think that this is a surprise. This is a renewal. It's not a surprise at all. It's a renewal that already was rejected. So this is only to flip, only, not rejected by the people, sir. People haven't been given a chance to vote. It was rejected by the, they always know about it. They didn't, they were not.
So, and then when the people got a chance to vote, they rejected it.
So this council has to decide if people, if a few hundred people stop a millage that pays for all the projects you guys are concerned about in your district. We can show a list of them, they aren't, but listen, you've got, you have a few people here. If we go poll the city of Alexandria about whether they want this capital millage in place, and hear the projects it routinely does, forget singular projects, it will be overwhelming that people say, oh, no, I'm gonna lose that, because this is what happens if you don't have a millage for capital projects. You can't, forget borrowing, you can't have the regular money in your capital outlet, would be a material hit. So the very idea you would be against it because you say it's not doing, it, it does it every day. That's how roads are fixed every day. With this tax that's in place right now, it's doing that work now. When it rolls off in two years, once it's not there, that's immediate money going out of your budget.
All right, Mayor, now, this, Mr. Schluter, correct, Schluter, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so if you're breaking, that'd be two years project expiration, correct? I don't want to misquote you, exactly.
That is correct.
Okay, it's, um, at least two years.
At least two.
At least two years, and we're up in December of 27.
It's an annual levy on the property tax, and the last levy that's authorized is 2027.
Okay, so can we still have a window that we can still do this and briefly delay this?
Absolutely, you can go as late, which you would never want to do, and it would be, it would not make a lot of sense. You could renew it immediately prior to its expiration, which would be fine, and you could continue it on the tax roll if everything goes perfectly. Let me tell you what can happen, because it's happened to me, okay? We had delays in elections because of a hurricane event. Had a sales tax expired because of school board up north did not renew it early. And they were not, they scheduled for a renewal, and that date was changed by the state. We've also had legislation, pandemic caused, it caused a delay in the election date also. We've also had bills in the legislature periodically, it's something years ago. One of those bills was almost passed, and it would have restricted all elections to one election a per year. And we're concerned about things beyond our control that may keep you off the ballot and not be able to renew a tax. Voters generally receive tax renewals, we're not increasing the tax much better than they do if it's a new tax.
And if in two years, some other more controversial tax that's not a renewal, or something the state imposed that you guys weren't even for comes up, you can imagine when you have a ballot with all those things. Look, this, this isn't a secret to get it done, it's no spectacular time to do it. The funny thing is, for most Americans, and for most of the Americans, renewals were not controversial until the last few years. A renewal was not controversial because it is truly only renewing what already exists. People have a sense of whether they want to pay that again or not. They have now become like any tax, through a lot of misinformation, controversial. The bottom line is here, forget borrowing against it, forget any spectacular, special, unique other project. This is your basic capital outlet, millage. This is a property tax that people pay who's bill all over the city. And it is the case, and I think many of you know it, that particularly districts one and three are the main beneficiaries of this. Central beneficiaries of any other district in the city. You can have Snaker or whatever, but y'all seen the projects, you have to agree. This is an easily provable statement, but you can't convince anybody who wants to believe it's conspiratorial or something else of anything. You can just show them that and the facts. The people helped are sitting in this audience, Rev, you need, you need this, this renewal? Ultimately, you have to have these things in place? This is basic running of your city on capital projects, the most basic. And you're not doing anything tonight, ladies and gentlemen. You're not bonding anybody to anything. All you're doing is letting the people in a democratic process decide if they want it. And that's a lot more people than sitting in this room. There are thousands of people who may want to weigh in on it, who the first time didn't even know what it was, but look at how many people voted on that. That's pathetic.
Okay, if I'm Mayor, President. The tax renewal failed, and the count was a low turn. Mayor, you're saying that we're bothering for the citizens to have the right to vote for the renewal? But thanks to this council, putting this book on the way up, these people are reading. The tax that will be called for, made the third, will cost the citizens $82,700 if we vote yes tonight. If we vote no and come back in two years, you will save $82,700. It's in the records. The citizens that I have spoken with, the councilmen at large.
Goes up. Typically, the cost of doing things go up, including this, unless it's included in some other deal, it would not go down, cost don't.
Well, I'm repeating what is in this book that was brought to my attention, and I'm now for the, meaning to David, and I question people from all over the city since I'm councilman in large, just not one, two, and three, but four and five. And they're saying that with this on the books, they want to know, have we received, seen any pre-drawings for Sugar House Road, which has been on there for five years? They want to know residential ditches, what streets, let's be specific. Street improvements, what streets are? Park and recreation, which parks are going to be receiving what amount? How much is what the questions are coming to me? I asked them to call the mayor's office because this is his agenda, and we are voting on to pass it or not pass it. I didn't write this, I read it, just as you all read it yourselves. You came up with these questions, you called me. I purposely gave you my cell number to call me, but I also gave you the number to call the mayor's office if you receive calls. I have no earthly idea. But what I am saying is, I'm back. The citizens are questioning the whereabouts, why we're putting this on now. You say they have opportunity to look into this, but they expect your call meeting. I can't see it until I get some more interest, things besides included, but not limited to. And as Mr. Lawren was saying, people are asking for specifics. District one, two, and three. Madam President, you know there are quite a few ditches in that district, even when our representative had not yet been done. We do, they do some things in that area, but people are asking if we're going to put this tax on, let's be specific. Let's know which parks are getting what. I was in Franco Hunter Park, Cheetham Park. Those parks are still without, still without recreational equip, still without recreational equipment, why is that?
The first project I did coming back as mayor was Cheetham Park, and it continues to be a signature project. That was our first project.
But that's the truth, I'm asking about the playground.
Go to the company, I.
Well, I was gonna, you asked me a question, I was gonna tell you.
Okay.
The Cheetham Park playground equipment that was there that we're redoing was my project, a spark project. In fact, all of the project area there was from the work that the administration did. But one thing to correct you on is, this is not my agenda tonight. I did not click this off.
I did.
If the council doesn't pass this ultimately, to let the people vote, you will be in way more trouble with your constituents than you think. But demagoguery and telling people things that are not accurate doesn't help. 65 cents of every capital dollar spent in Spark were spent, and was the equivalent of Ed Lawren's district. 65 cents of every capital dollar was spent under the, on the Spark project and capital outlay in general under this administration, and what is that equivalent? And the highest amount in District Three. Now, let's keep talking District Three, the stats. What district has the most ditch closures in the city? What money, what, how much money has been spent in District Three versus any other district? The property taxes are raised everywhere, but they're spent in districts one and three, not because people aren't kind or because, but the opposite, because we know that's where the need is. Those areas were annexed into the city from the parish with many times inferior infrastructure and other problems, and that's where we spend money. New neighborhoods aren't paid for by the city. They're paid for by private developers and donated to the city for operations and maintenance. So anyone can see with any outcome of study that actually, the property tax helps the districts indeed the most. And this is not hard to figure out. It only is hard to figure out if you choose to believe things that are inaccurate.
So, okay. I do not spread demagoguery. I'm telling you what is wrong here. So what I asked you again was, in three years, why Cheetham Park? Why Franco Hunter Park? Children do not have playground equipment. They have a fantastic football field, I, I grant that. But those, all those kids do not play on the playground equipment. Matter of fact, as I recall, and I wasn't on the council, Mrs. Perry's grandson's got injured on the playground equipment that you removed, that the city, let me retract, the city removed. So Mayor, all I was saying was, and I'm concluding, that if we pass this tonight, put it on the records to be voted on the third, it's gonna fail because citizens from the city are telling me they don't want it. So I said what I said, I spread no demagoguery, I spread the truth. It's in this book, read it for yourselves, and you all know where we're going. I thank you, Madam President, for your time.
You're welcome, and it wasn't my grandson, my grandchild that got injured on the, on the equipment, um, councilman, Rain, it was another child that actually got hurt on the equipment. The equipment was pulled because I had asked for it to be pulled before the child got hurt, because it was old. And so the equipment got pulled. I know that when I was sitting in his seat, couldn't get playground equipment because it was during COVID. And I know that COVID is over with, but that's what I was told because they didn't have enough people to work because, you know, it was during that time of COVID. I also spoke to the mayor and his administration, and they told me that the equipment that they was working on the contract, I was told that. I can only tell you what I have been told. I'm here to be honest with you. So if, if the equipment is not there, it's not because I'm not asking for it. But like I said, they said that they were working on the contract to get the equipment. That's their word. All I know is I'm like, you, councilman, Rain, I would love to have equipment in my park. But I also would like to know that if we do not put this item up to vote, how do, I know that we have the 9,400, 9,400 in the budget for equipment, so we have that money in the budget. But for all the other things, the ditch closures, the sidewalks repaired, the lights, or whatever, how do we pay for that to get repaired without putting this item to be voted for?
So, we have a lot of questions, what are solutions? I mean, everybody have questions. Everybody have questions, everybody have. Now, the way I look at it, now, I agree with some of the representatives, but I have capital projects, I've been here two years and two months, that can be done, they haven't been done, they could be done, I have that. So on one side, we're saying, don't do it, the other side is saying, do it. So. So my take is that listen to the other, how many, how many more, other uh comments, and then we'll come back. We're giving a lot of your guys time, so the next person.
Mr. That's fine, Mr. Would be, and I understand, um would be Mr. Ford.
Um, Madam President, I would like to request a waiver on the three-minute time limit.
I can't do it, um, Mr. Ford, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um. There was a lot of things said by the mayor. That's not true. Misleading, okay? So first of all, um, the uh when, when you vote on a particular tax renewal, it falls into a particular election. Okay, but that taxes assess at the end of the year. If you go back to a lot of the previous tax proposals, they will put in the election the same year, forty years before, not three years before. This expires two thousand twenty-seven. We're in two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and it goes. Now, if, if we really wanted to, just like they've done in the past, we could take time, defer this, and actually work out those things. Because other municipalities, what they've done in the past is when they put a tax proposition on a ballot, they refer to a specific capital improvement list. And that list is part of their uh budget process. Every year, the city council will look at that list, determine what that criteria is, and assign a priority. And that's where the money goes. Right now, what we got on here? Concepts of projects. Not specific projects, concepts of projects. Sugar House Road been on there for three tax proposal renew. Now a shovel of dirt's been overturned. That could have been advanced a long time ago. The other thing is, most of that money, unlike what the mayor said, does not flow into the, the uh communities that we're, we're talking about. It simply does not. I, I challenged the mayor, produce that information, because if you really wanted to be transparent and you wanted to do this, the voters of that, oh, I will be throwing that, that information up in front of you every chance I get. You know, but that's not the case, we can see without a little notice. Now, what criteria is used to determine the priority of these projects? You know, what criteria?
For council.
Criteria? What criteria, what decides this project is number one and the money goes to that subject?
On your criteria. Five finger hands.
And you're seeing crickets, alright? Now, what is the reason it's not crickets?
In each budget ordinance, the criteria are listed, P one, P two, P three, and P indeterminate. And they're based on the American College of Civil Engineers criteria, and the highest rated are always drainage and other projects. It's listed in each budget ordinance, including when you were on the council, because I wrote the priorities to be based on the needs of districts one and three principle.
Well, we had put money in for
That's it, Mr. Ford.
We had put money in for uh projects and and in District Two, it was broken up into three phases. Phase two and phase three was removed from the budget. It was removed from the budget. We need to defer this so that we can have a good discussion.
I would like to respond to that, Mr. We need to let him respond to this information. You have to give me your input.
Oh, you can respond, I'm sure they want to hear.
I want to address the specific projects, and, and I may ask Grant to do it, I'm gonna help people understand it, but nothing I've said tonight has been unheard, despite what Mr. Ford said. People shouldn't have to do that when they take the mic, it's very easy to say that about someone and not prove it. The same way you can't prove a negative, there's no way to prove what he's saying I didn't do when I can show you the data and and have routinely at my briefing shown a pie chart of those projects, down to the cent of what we spent. Sixty-five cents on the dollar. So that's a fact. It can't be taken from me, it's politically expedient to try, but that was my commitment in SPAR, and I lived to. In addition, the idea of why you have to have general clauses and things that are make it not lock in a specific are long lessons learned by council members past, like this one. It's very simple, and maybe not all of you have been through it, but you should have by now, and that is this. If you make your capital list that final, I can't ask Donna and others, who she's been here long enough to know, and so is Trey. You've already lived through that. If you make a capital, general capital allocation, I don't think y'all are all here to see. But if you take this and you lock it into just four projects, and one of them stops, or you can't do it. Do you understand that you can't use the money for any other capital project?
So, so why would it stop? No, no, why would it stop if it's for a specific thing?
Legal issues, uh the state has a different funding priority, you lose the match, uh it becomes a redundancy that you can't, that you can't do. You learn of a new way to do the drainage that's way better? Like, this isn't trickery, guys. You know what was trickery? When people lock yourselves into coal, pepper roads, and some other things that stuck this council for years. It isn't Shock Boy that came up with this. This council learned to do this tax this way. What I did that's different, because a lot of cities he goes to just leaves it, the general allocation for roads and streets and other projects, is I do list things so that you can make sure you're telling people, this is a priority, that. The other stuff is easy to answer. Sugar House Road, we can't. It has phases that are built, you can go drive down and see it. Sugar House Road is going through a wetland, if you will, there are tons of problems with getting it there. But this administration in the past and now is progressing it. I, I wasn't here three years ago, Mr. Green, so I can't tell you what happened there. I can tell you this, the architects have approved a citywide handling of all of our equipment. You will benefit from that first. Ms. Perry, I didn't let the equipment go for four years. I put in the initial equipment that got let go for four years, because SPAR projects put those in. I'm gonna fix them again because I don't want children on dangerous, cruddy equipment, period. I won't stand for it. And so those projects will happen because we're pushing them now. But if you don't do this, you can't pay for the equipment. The splash pads, we put those in, you can't pay for that operations and maintenance. And I'm not gonna blame it all on COVID. It takes someone leading and making sure that defer, that you're not deferring maintenance. This is a no-brainer most of the time anywhere. This is the renewal of half of your capital tax. Is that right, Trey, half?
Forty-seven percent.
Forty-seven percent. If you don't do this, you can't plan it. So now let's talk about why twenty years, Grant calls it, I'm gonna make it. There's no way to plan at the five and ten-year bars that people use to do it. You can't, you can't amortize that out and do anything. Your charter requires your capital projects to be on, how many year plan, guys? A five-year plan? And, and I heard Senator, excuse me, I heard Madam President just say it a while ago. You've gotta be thinking about this stuff out a little longer than one year. When y'all go to look at your capital budget and this budget process, you're looking at five years. And so when you ask, why would we start thinking about this two years early, because that's the best practice everywhere but here, apparently?
I would disagree with that.
It is. Well, that's why, does the State Bond Commission recommend it?
Okay, okay, but, but a lot of stuff that you said, Mayor. I don't dispute, I don't agree, I'm not gonna challenge and it could be, it could be factually correct.
Thank you. My concern is, I got three constituents in the audience who, whose opinion I'm reliable, I respect. It's Augustine, it's Fulton, and it's Jackson. These are three ladies whose opinion I respect. This is, and you said earlier, we're in a unique time. Where in the past, this was mundane and ordinary, now it's not. So people want to know what's going on. It would be nice that we would have had this discussion before we got to this moment and take this vote. You can't have it until you put it on, this is not our discussion, you see, it's already, we all, this is not, this is your discussion.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna write, so we've been talking about these projects for two years.
Okay, but, but this was stated, it's recommended that we do it at least two and a half years. If we delay this a little while, would that harm anything?
What, what, what is, keep it to words of my mouth, what is the latest people like this? Because I, I feel, you know, with everyone that's always here, and they're sitting in town, and uh Mr. Green, and we have our constituents in here. So some of the language, we could probably reduce a little like it. But, you know, I know there are times we all have times, so what is maybe it's like it possibly, that's this one, and I know someone that's asking you to ask that question, ask that question too.
What question?
No, I didn't ask, I didn't ask the question.
That's a question.
As far as being on the May third ballot?
No, no, you mean, now, I know the May third ballot, that's an election for a close court, but aren't there fall elections?
There are currently, there are currently four elections each year, two in spring, two in the fall.
Alright, but aren't we said to have some fall elections this year?
If you were going
I don't think so.
If you were going for the if you were going for the October eleventh election this year, you would need to start the process in March, May, next month.
Okay, what, I mean, so, say October, would that affect our, would that affect anything?
You refer this prior to its expiration, that you will continue to collect it, uninterrupted, that is correct.
That's what um I had asked, and that's what I guess. Saying that we need to get out and educate the people, and
Yes.
The mayor said that to you and my friends.
You, you have said that you think people do not understand of what this is tonight and in general?
Captain Laverne.
Well, I agree with you on the two percent.
I, I said that, that we need to
There are a lot of people that do understand.
Yes.
Well, I'm not saying that a lot of people don't understand. I'm saying that we need to get out and educate them, we need to let them know in Langham's turn, what this tax is for, what will it be used for. And once we do that, then they may want to vote for the tax. If we lay out plain and say, this is what the tax is for. I know you have Sugar House Road, you have the ditches and all of that on there, but they need to see it in mind, and they want to go.
So
So I'm gonna
I keep on interrupting, I'll be valid.
It's okay.
So, we vote this, if you put on a ballot, you do.
Yeah, we do.
So if, and if it fell last night, it so if we get out and do our do our stock, do what we have to do. Put it on and make sure that we push forward. Did I explain what, what, what it is, because, you know, I've learned a lot of stuff, uh first hand myself, but we get out and do our, that when we put it on, it won't fail, who'd give that, my bad to say.
But we have to do it together.
We have to.
I said that, and I'm gonna continue to say it. We know that the tax is, we can't do anything, we can't repair anything, we can't get anything done without the tax. We're recommending, I'm saying, and I, I've asked this, that the administration and the council members come together, do just what Councilman Johnson said, go out, educate the people. And then, they may say, oh, it may be one thing that could be said or that they learn, and we say, okay, well, I'm gonna vote for it because I understand it now. So I'm gonna recommend that we delay this. She did. And Mayor, I miss among the assistants, I just love so much because I'm far from the heart of the city. It wouldn't do any good to have a town hall meeting. We really want to know the things that are in our district that are important to us is on that list. It didn't do any good, I mean, you can, we, we know what it's for. We want the money, we want it, but we don't want it to continue to go out Jackson Street. Our, our underpads look like crap. It's embarrassing, it truly is. It's muck and mud, there's no sidewalk, there are people that live in the, um, our Indian Manor that have wheelchairs. They can't even go through there, that's awful. And it's been there for years, my grandson's felt in there on his bike, walking, it's just, we want to know what's working in our district. Put it on the list for us, when we see it, we're gonna love it, and if you follow through, we're gonna love it.
There's an underpass project tonight, too.
Yes. Hope it's, I hope it's hope it's rapid.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. What's your name again?
It's Mr. Schubert.
Schubert. It was stated here that um this was put on the ballot in April and failed. Reason being, as the mayor just said, uh you can always put out good, good information, that information wasn't put out. Uh so that's why it failed. My thing is, is Ms. Perry just said that it's the council that has to get together. Did Mr. Fowler and Mr. Ballard get with the rest of the council to do, to do this uh agenda fact sheet? I know you can't answer that. No, Major. Okay, so the whole council was not involved in introducing this resolution. Okay. Maybe you can answer this. What date will the city council submit the application for authorization to the State Bond Commission?
In order to beat the State Bond Commission's timeline, we prefiled an application to preserve your option to put this on the May third ballot, if you elect to do so. If you elect not to tonight, uh that will be withdrawn.
Thank you. How much is the current tax proposition spent on the following places that you have that's on this um this renewal? And one thing I do not like is including but not limited to me, and this is me personally, when you put that statement in, that means you can do whatever you want to do, and to whatever place that you want to put. Now, of course, the last village was done in April, and it was a very low turnout, I should say. Why? Because the people did not know it. And eighty-two, eighty-two or eighty-three thousand dollars that will be spent for this, eighty-two seven, eighty-two thousand seven hundred dollars, according to the the fact sheet. It's my suggestion that, as you say, delay it until the people know that the projects that they want done will be done. Because I've been in Alexandria twenty-two plus years and heard about Sugar House Road. And still, I understand the wetlands and the government taking this, and the state taking that. taking that. I understand all that. But Sugar House Road on every, every ballot, my next question will be. My time did stop because somebody answered my question. Uh, we found out that.
Miss Perry.
You know what, Ms. Perry, don't even worry about it. Do not worry. But I asked the people of Alexandria, if it does get on the ballot, vote no for it. That's my opinion. Miss Perry?
I should be up here. I feel she seemed.
Just so you know, the Sugar House Road project is tens of millions, and those projects take multiple decades to fund and build. And, uh, it has been on because in each of the years that it's been involved, progress has been made. And, uh, hopefully, we're moving to a better spot than ever with proper funding. But, look, the state, its part is huge in that. That's a multi, you couldn't do Sugar House Road spending money. So we know that, but not everybody does, but that's the case. But when the state keeps a lot of its money, and you guys, if you don't know it, you're learning, in priority five, that's also a way of them saying, we got money for you. But if it isn't a priority one, that ain't real money. That's the promise to do something later. Whereas our money has been matched and ready, and, and we are making that progress. The more money you move from five to one, obviously, the better we are.
And, and it boils right back down to the same thing.
You can't take it all. You want it on the call because the state has to see it's still on your tax call. So some of these arguments, they just make no sense.
So what I'm saying is, once again, you give us the explanation, we have to find a way to, we may not be in this position if we found a way to let the citizens know. Just what you say, it's just that simple. Um, it can't always be the council members going out to the neighborhood watch meetings. I know you go, Miss Catherine, but to educate those people, if we could have said that, or the people would have knew about the reason why Sugar House Road, um, is not completed or whatever, then they would have understood. And that, that makes it simple for them. But if we can't educate them, everything, they're, they're gonna be blaming to it. It's just a simple fact of communicating. And when I say communicate, I mean, the mayor, his administration, councilmen, if it's in my district, me.
I hope.
Councilman, Councilman Ballor, because we have three councilmen in each district. Three, not one, not two, but three. We have self and the two councilmen at large. So that gives everybody three councilmen to contact. So if we all go out together and work together, because that's what we want to see. That's what they want to see, Mayor. That's what they want to see, that you're working with us. That's all they want to see. And they want to know that we will hold you accountable. We have to hold people accountable when we say we're gonna do something and we don't do it. So, it's about gaining the constituents' trust, allowing them to see us work together. Go to these meetings, and I know that you can't make all the meetings. Jim, you can make some meetings. We have to become one.
If not, we'll be right back to the same spot, we'll pass the vote again.
And I'm not, and that's not what we want to be. That's not what we want to be. We want things to happen. We want them to see that you see in there that we're gonna get the equipment. And we go to these meetings and we say, okay, uh, Woodside, Sam Towne, you can have this. This is why I want to explain to you why the equipment is here or not. We just have to educate them and let them know.
I, I just, we, we're out here working every day. And I, I just, some of the idea that it's us, I, I wouldn't want to tell on you guys about how not often there's meetings with council members and, and follow up and planning things ahead of time and all the things we do. But I, I can't just continue to sit, I'm, I'm trying hard, Madam President, but continue to sit and have things that are absolutely false said over and over. Not just for you, but about people personally. It's, it's about, or some Sugar House Road, for example.
I get it all.
If you, I, I know you do. I know you do, and I think it's unfair. But the pieces of Sugar House Road that are gone, look at what was done there, just like we planned, we finished it. And what kind of homeownership, what, I mean, what kind of housing is out there? The kind you want, Mr. Lawfordine. And, and that's the promise of that kind of transportation cord. That's why it was a topwind and spark and would remain and reignite or whatever else we do. I do agree with Ms. Augustine on one thing. You can have all the town hall meetings you want, and all it's gonna be is, you know John, what I'm saying. That, that's not what happens because you're being fed of. It's on pencil. You're being fed something that's false, that you could ever put all the projects for this tax in one. That's what your yearly capital outlay, five-year plan update is for. You can't list all the projects and have people go vote on that, because if any one of them come out or don't happen, you've got a problem with the call. I didn't know you don't. Yes, you did. Yes, I'm. You don't know what's gonna happen in five years. But Mr. Porter pretends to be an ex parte everything. If you list every project.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just regardless of what decision you raise, with respect to the proposition, you have a state limit of two hundred words in that proposition. Uh, there was a reference earlier referring to the capital improvement program plan that has a list of pages and pages of projects. Yes, you can do that, and we've done that regularly on foreign issue propositions, not tax renewals. Keep in mind, you're gonna have a two hundred word limit, so you can't list out all these projects. If you do incorporate a reference to projects, be careful, because if for any reason you expend sufficient monies and you complete those projects, you can't spend another penny on an additional project.
That's what I'm saying.
Have to go back to the voters to rededicate that tax. I've had that happen before on sales taxes. It, it's, it's something to consider, and that's why you have that general lead in. So this is a capital improvement tax for the city of Alexandria with a list, an illustrative list of the projects. And we switched out one as a major indicator for another project. Uh, but the purpose for that is, is that you're not hamstrung as a city, as a council, as a mayor, so that if you need to have one project, have a priority over another, or you need to end a project, if you've done these projects, you have the ability to do that without having to go back to rededicating the tax.
He just explained the difference of a dedicated call, which I was correct when I said what I said, and, and what you would do with a list. This is how we did it in the past. We, we did a, we did a limited tax bond, and we did a SPB for Spark. Let me just explain, and we did do the project list for the bond side. So when we went out, people could decide whether they wanted to bond these projects with a specific list, just as Mr. Slater described, but the call, which is what this is, remained general on purpose. And I would suggest that that remains the right practice for that.
Let me, let me just say this. This is why, this, this is. I'm voting out of order. Because I'm speaking on the top. This is. Down order, Miss Perry. I really need to rebut and refute what I'm saying, because if I don't, y'all think that might be true. But I can refute ads, and I can rebut.
Yes, Mr.?
Sugar House Road has nineteen million dollars slated from the state of Louisiana. Waiting on the city of Alexandria.
Waiting on us, me?
Okay. I stay waiting.
May I complete my statement?
If it's nineteen million dollars that the state of Louisiana has. Twelve million dollars, ladies and gentlemen, we had to mistake several years ago, we lost to the South Circle. We can continue and not do something with Sugar House Road, and you will lose it, I can assure you. Because what is occurring in Washington, D.C., we all may be in the poor. I also want to just keep reiterating to everyone, everyone, the North Sixteenth Street Bridge was done by state funding. State funding, State Representative Lawfordine. If I'm lying, you can call his office. So, all I'm saying is, ladies and gentlemen, we need to look at this, work well, wait it, and I assure you again, I am not spreading delicate ivory. Oh, so what if we're gonna do, Madam Plurton, if you don't have any more, uh, I'm sorry, Madam Plurton, Madam President, do you have any more people to counsel?
Mr. White.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. White, thanks, okay?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Now, Mr. Porter was pointing out, here, here, Mr. Porter, I, I don't know what that is, so I'm not gonna speak about it, but I don't know. What I don't understand is, now, the mayor is saying can't dedicate certain things to certain projects. It's gotta be one topic. No, that's what you just said, ma'am.
It's not exactly what I, I understand where you're going. Not exactly. You're limited. Either way, if you, if you dedicate too much, and you have to get a, go outside of it because you're forced to as a city, you're locked in if it's in the call of the tax. That's different from dedicating a list of projects that you bombed out for.
Okay. But all I'm saying is, and Ms. Perry knows this, um, Main Street and Third Street are messed up, and I don't know why we can't get our streets over there fixed and everything. And I know the mayor said the drainage, that, um, Mayor Hall got some of that money, and, I believe John Bill, Senator Kennedy, and Senator Cast, I think Julia Lovlo got some money to fix our drainage problem. All I'm trying to say is, if y'all would give us something saying, well, hey, this money's gonna go for that, this money's gonna go for this, instead of having the general fund, it's almost like you saying you got the general fund money, and we'll fund this, but I still don't understand something else, Mayor. You said, if, if a project is funded and you pay for it, what, why would it be canceled?
I didn't say that.
Okay, what did you say?
It's not, it's not that. It's if you, if you put in a dedicated call, which is this, for the tax, what I call the call, it's a tax call. Shall the people of Alexandria renew, and it has that? We list a certain amount of projects to make sure that the public knows these principal projects are gonna be, they're gonna be held accountable, that they're gonna allocate or appropriate money for those every year. But if you were to list and say only those, and it can only be spent on those, you're locking yourself into a position that they've been in before that is not good. It can be either way.
But, but when you lock yourself in, that's the point. People get upset, but just like we, we had the tax before and you cut off the mic. I never did get a reading from Mr. Castle why those mics were cut off when we had a blast. All I'm trying to say is this, if you don't dedicate it and you send it one place and one way.
Mr. White, you're doing great. You're asking a really good question. Cut off the mics.
Well, I'm just telling you, somebody cut off my mic because they told me.
I called for the question.
And then also the mic. So that's it, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you. We're gonna vote on it.
My discussion I would have liked to say as well. I just wanted to say that out loud, that I also probably made comments, but I understand the question is called.
Anybody, he's missing.
Any opposed? All we're doing is voting for, to put the item on the agenda.
The road, they all vote. They're not voting for a tax.
But my question is, okay, if this thing fails, I'd wait six months to regress, right?
Well, we're trying to ask a question, he didn't say.
Yeah, if this fails.
Because it's the possible extreme of this.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Law.
Yes.
Ms. Law, she?
I'm staying.
Ms. Perry?
I'm standing.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm staying.
And Stelfa? Yes. Mr. Green? Okay, we have one no, three yeses, and three abstains.
Which he has. Because not.
The matter did not fail. The matter is, it could be returned to the agenda. Unfortunately, procedurally, as we understand it, we have to confirm this issue. You cannot meet the deadline for May, because of your asking tonight. The people, the people will not be able to vote.
But because of the extension, you did not force a full six-month period, so that.
Right.
Number four. There's a question, because I'm just, see, fast, I'll assume your time out for ten, you must twenty-five, that's when you have.
Y'all can go ahead and pass it. I think it's canceled, but it doesn't hurt to pass because it's a co-sponsorship. So I don't know that. And it's still, in case it's not, I would just suggest vote for the resolution, it doesn't hurt you, just an expression of the will of the co-sponsor, if it still happens. If not, if they cancel it for the March benefits, we won't vote.
Motion by Councilman Ballor, second by Councilman Johnson, of his comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion, please.
Number five, President, she proposed, Lieutenant Department of Environmental Quality, Louisiana Brownfield Conference in June twenty-twenty-five.
Motion?
Ma'am.
Second, please.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Ballor, second by Councilwoman Felte, Club of Tommies.
My name on?
Yes, I tested by, I'm sorry about that.
On this environmental, this, this, the conference is coming here. Hello?
Write your comments.
No, no, I'm saying, is this something that's coming? Huh? It's not a Q and A. Well, see, I'm trying to get something about this carbon capturing business. We need to stop that, that'll poison our aquifers and stuff. That's why I asked, if the conference is gonna be talking about carbon capture and poison our aquifers, we'll be like plenty Michigan, we'll be drinking La Celle Orbs and all like that. So that's what I'm asking. What is it, what is this environmental thing? That's what I'm asking. Hello?
It's a conference.
It's a conference? It's talking about carbon capture or anything like?
We don't know what they were talking about.
Okay, so I was just asking, that's what I'm asking. All right.
Discussions, all in favor? Any opposed?
Motion, Perry.
Motion, Perry.
Item number six, resolution to close sponsor the long bond, five page, to be dealt in April twenty-twenty-five.
Motion, please?
Ma'am, second.
Motion by Councilman Ballor, second by Councilman Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion, Perry.
Number seven, resolution to adopt the twenty-twenty-four municipal water pollution prevention audit.
Motion?
Ma'am.
Second, please. Second? Motion by Councilman Ballor, second by Councilwoman Felter, public comments. Discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion, Perry.
Number eight, resolution authorizing air retirement for bids of coordination and decoordination equipment.
Motion, please? Second?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Felter, second by Councilman Lawberday, public comments. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion, Perry.
Number nine, resolution authorizing air retirement for bids for electric meters and accessories.
Motion, please?
Ma'am.
Second, please?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ballor, second by Councilman Lawberday, public comments. Discussion.
I don't want to get up there until she tells her name. I don't want to get beat down, so I said, oh. No, it's all right, it's all right. Look, are these smart meters that we're getting? You want smart meters, okay. The mayor's on record, he wants some smart meters. But I'm against the smart meters that with the city council and the mayor wants because, um, I believe that they cause different things and stuff like that. And you see, AI is coming online pretty soon, so you know that we're going to have a whole lot of stuff going on where they're going to be able to track us and trace us and everything else.
I already know.
You never know, the market of these may be right around the corner.
Can you point at it and get the reading from it?
Uh, I hope so, but they're not always that way. It depends. Uh, we try to always replace with, uh, with meters with more capability. It's not always possible depending on the area, the infrastructure involved. Uh, we do require.